And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Commissioner San Filippo?
Present.
Commissioner Disney is excused. Vice Chair Marsters?
Present.
Chair Clapper is excused.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or to have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anybody who would like to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of the March 5th Planning Commission meeting?
None.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The procedure for the public hearing: Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The item on the agenda tonight is 301 Industrial Road, PAMP, Amendment to a Grading and Dirt Hall Approval Certificate.
Good evening. My name is Colette Manier. I'm a contract project planner to the City of San Carlos, and I will be presenting this item to you this evening. I'd like to draw your attention to two additional documents in addition to the staff report, which was included in the agenda packet. That includes a supplemental staff report to provide revised wording to Condition Number 10 at the request of public works staff. You also have at your place is an email we received today from Paul Maganetti on behalf of the Greater East San Carlos Community Group. I'd like to start off with just a brief review of how we got here. The site is about an 18-acre site, and it's located at 301 Industrial Road. It is bounded by the PG&E Regional Maintenance Facility and Highway 1, a self-storage facility on the southerly side, and existing commercial and industrial buildings on the west side of Industrial Road. The site has been undergoing remediation for soil contamination. That was completed in 2011. The firm carrying out that remediation, Northgate Environmental Management, has submitted the documentation to the Regional Water Quality Control Board demonstrating that the site has been fully remediated. That material is under review by Regional Water Quality, and should they concur, they will issue something called a "No Further Action" letter, which will be their formal determination that the remediation has been completed in accordance with the remediation plan that they approved. In 2008, a grading plan was approved for the construction of the project, and it included a maximum of just over 59,000 cubic yards of grading on the site and off-haul export of material from the site of just about 8,300 cubic yards. The reason we are here tonight is that, as a result of that remediation, there have been changes to the site conditions beyond what were estimated at the time that they sought a grading permit in 2008. First of all, they made assumptions about the depth and scale of foundations, building slabs, paving, that, in some cases, differed from what they found on the site. The area that needed to be remediated was located underneath a building and therefore was characterized as best they could when the building was still in place. When it was removed and further soil testing was done, the area that needed to be remediated was larger than initially planned for. And finally, they stockpiled the concrete from demolished facilities on the site, ground it, and had intended to reuse it as part of the construction. The remediation action plan approved by Regional Water Quality required all that material to be removed from the site. So, as a result, they finished grades on-site post-remediation are different from what were assumed and shown in the grading permit that was looked at and approved in 2008. The finished grading, the grades that would result from the grading activity for the construction of the project are basically the same as they were in 2008. The change comes from the difference in the grades post-remediation but prior to the start of construction. The requested amendment is to slightly decrease the grading on-site from what was approved at just over 59,000 cubic yards to just over 56,000 cubic yards. I need to point out at this point that these numbers include what is called a swell factor. Engineers, when they calculate it, they look at the cubic yards in the ground and say, "This is how much needs to be moved around and removed." But when the dirt is taken out of its in-ground, compacted condition, it generally takes up more space than it did in the ground. And so all of the figures here have been adjusted for that, and those are what we use for the approval of the permit and also for the permitting fees. The increase in dirt haul would be from just under 8,300 cubic yards to an export of almost 38,000 cubic yards and, I'm sorry, an import of almost 38,000 cubic yards and an export of 11,500 cubic yards. Of that grading, 23,000 on-site grading and 23,000 cubic yards of dirt haul from the site are basically contingent upon soil testing. If the soil on the site is tested and found to either be appropriate for landscape planting or that it can be readily amended to be appropriate, then this grading will not need to occur. This is a contingency because the contractor has not yet been able to be on-site and do that preliminary testing for landscape installation. So it's possible that that grading will not have to occur. The haul routes are basically run along Industrial to Holly through the interchange and to Highway 1, both leaving the site and coming to the site. The route does not run in front of any residential uses. The required findings set out in San Carlos Municipal Code is that the grading will not adversely affect drainage or lateral support of other properties, that it is consistent with the general plan and municipal code, and it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. As set out on the staff report and set out in the resolution, the staff's recommendation that those findings can be made and the factual basis for that are outlined, and I'd be happy to go through that if there's a need for that. The sequel determination, we've already done an EIR and then an addendum to the EIR when the project was revised. We took a look at this project and found that we did not find that it was a significant change in the project, project circumstances, or information surrounding the project that would result in new or increased significant impacts or change in the feasibility of any of the mitigation measures. And again, and therefore, under sequel guidelines, no further environmental review is required. There is a revised Condition Number 10. Basically, what public works staff wanted to ensure was that it was clear that the refund applied to the portion of the landscape of the grading and dirt haul that is contingent upon the soil testing and not the entire grading amounts. The rest of them are basically the material that's needed to bring existing grades to the finished grades and have them calculated by their engineer. So the revised wording to this Condition Number 10, which is in the supplemental staff report, simply makes that, provides language to make that clear. We have before you submitted comment from the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. The concern that was raised is that Regional Water Quality Control Board has not formally acknowledged that the remediation is complete, and that is correct. Condition Number 6 of the Development Plan Conditions of Approval do not permit construction to start until the site remediation is complete. The way we know that is when Regional Water Quality issues a "No Further Action" letter. So once the city receives a copy of that letter, then that condition would be satisfied, and then construction could start. That information has been provided back to the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Group so that they're aware that we won't be allowing fill and grading on the site until Regional Water Quality has made their formal determination that the site has been remediated to comply with the action plan. And so we have before you then the motion to adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the 2008 Grading and Dirt Hall Approval Certificate, including Exhibit A to the resolution, which is the proposed amended grading and dirt hall approval certificate, and as part of that substituting in the alternative wording to Condition Number 10, as it is set out in the supplemental staff report, with one word removed, and there is a "the" before "some," and that "the" has been removed. With that, I'm available to answer any of the Commission's questions.
I have a question. Welcome. I think this is the first time I've ever had. Have you talked to us, as far as I know?
Well, we haven't been doing that much on PAMP for the last little while in terms of coming to the Commission.
On your slides, I was just dawn, I mean, when I was sitting here, is that we're going from 59,000 to 56,000? Just a curious question, why is it different?
Well, the difference is, the grading that was done on-site is simply, once they had those finished grades, they made assumptions that were both underestimated the site and overestimated the site. So once all of that's balanced out, that's why it's less. They, you know, when you're asking, you kind of tend to err on the sides of the maximum you might need rather than the narrower. Now that they actually know what the grades are, the grading plans, you see they're more precise.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
You have any questions?
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I have a curiosity about why you're planning to do this between November and February. And my impression was that we didn't haul soil and do a lot of that type of work after October and before March. And so I was just curious why you're doing all this work in the rainy season.
PAMP has provided, the city, the information, is part of their application. In terms of the preparation they need to do on the site, that's when they say they'll be doing that part of the work. Representatives of PAMP are here and can perhaps answer that question more accurately than I can. That's part of what they've said in their application. There is a condition of approval that says that they can't work in that time period unless they have applied for and received an exception from the city engineer. Given that the site is very level, that with appropriate sedimentation and erosion control plans, it may be appropriate, and my understanding is that the city engineer looks at that on a week-by-week basis, and if we're going to have, you know, particularly torrential storms, he may not permit grading in that time period, but the rest of the time, provided there's appropriate measures taken on-site, the grading can be done in a safe manner.
What was the second question? So the second question that I had was, in the original plan, the truck trips were really 16 months in length, whereas these seem to only be four months in length. And I was just curious if that's because you're only doing the grading this time and not the construction, or not?
The information that I provided as part of the staff report regarding the number of trucks is really all truck activities. So it might be cement trucks, it might be trucks delivering steel. It was an estimate done at that time of all the truck trips for construction, including grading and dirt hauls. So I wanted to put the change in the dirt haul activity in a context that shows that, you know, it's a major construction project, there will be truck movements, this is going to increase them, but in context, given everything else, it's not really a particularly large increase.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you, members of the Commission. I'm David Jury, Vice President, Palo Alto Medical Foundation. I'm here to answer your questions if you'd like. I can answer the one you asked just a moment ago about why now. We're ready to go. We're ready to mobilize. We have staff hired. We have materials ready to go. We have trucks ready to go. And we've calculated our delay cost is approximately half a million dollars a month. For us to delay it another three months, it's another million and a half dollars. So it's, that's the reason. Colette is right, the city engineer has to approve our activities, and he does it on a weekly basis. So if the weather is not right, we can't move. Other than that, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them, but I don't have a presentation for you.
Do you have any projected data as to when you're going to get clearance from the water?
It's the Regional Water Quality Board.
Yeah, what's the timing on that?
We are day by day. It could come tomorrow, it could come the day after, it's just...
Do they give you a projection as to when they're going to give it to you?
So the report that says November of 2012 to February of 2013 is not necessarily accurate, because you're ready to go now.
Right.
We are ready to go, but there'll be more, there's preliminary work to do before we get into the big dirt haul and grading. We've got to build a loop road, bring some utilities in. There's a lot of work that has to go. That was our best guess at the time. We can amend that if we're ready to go sooner.
So the mere fact that you have to do that, and if you were to get approval tonight, that would allow you to begin that preliminary work?
Yes.
I would, no.
No.
No, no, just the...
We're going to get the "No Further Action" letter tomorrow.
Well, that's the drop-dead thing that has to happen before you can start.
That has to happen, then we have to, there are some documents that need to be recorded, some tying the ribbons around the agreements with the city that we think probably will be another week. But yes, we're ready to move.
And so nothing we will do here tonight will change that approval. That needs to come from the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
That is correct.
Prior to you moving forward in any way.
There will be no action on the site prior to approval and change of title on the property, and there will be nothing that we do or that you do that will impact the issuance of the "No Further Action" letter. They are considering the facts that they have.
If I could just, my understanding is that Northgate Environmental submitted documentation in the early part of January. They also provided a 30-day public review and comment period, which has closed, and I believe that they have 90 days from the date of submittal to review the documentation, ask for clarifications, or to make their determination that the documentation submitted is sufficient for them to issue the "No Further Action" letter. And the November date, I believe, was based on a timeline that makes an assumption that they will start construction on April 2nd. That's sort of, kind of, about 60 days out from when they submitted, a little more than 60 days. But again, no construction will be permitted by the city until Regional Water Quality says they're satisfied, and that's the "No Further Action" letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah, I have one question for you. In Condition 18, the hours of operation, are those the old conditions under the old zoning code, or are those new conditions under the new zoning code?
I might be better able to answer that. They are the new ones, except that they are a half hour shorter than allowed because we took the most constrained set of hours out of what's provided in the grading provisions as well as the construction period. So it's slightly more constrained than, I think it would have been permitted to continue till 6:00 PM, and the condition says that they have to stop at 5:30, because that's what's in the grading ordinance.
I was just a little concerned about a couple pieces of that, because it starts during the commute hours and ends during the commute hours, and then the other piece is that you can, they can work on, from 9:00 to 5:00 on Sundays. And I wasn't sure if, in our new zoning code, you were allowed to work on Sundays at 9:00 AM?
You got that out?
Yeah?
The noise ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Given what it costs to have people work on Sundays in terms of overtime, I'm not sure how much of that was going to occur, but given the other costs of, you know, the cost of money and cost of the site, that will be something PAMP will have to work out.
I just wanted to ask that question.
There also is required, as I understand it, a traffic management plan, and certainly that city engineer could adjust these hours if he saw the need.
I was just trying to prevent some concerns, so...
The folks who are driving the trucks, who are getting paid by the load, are also concerned about being in traffic, and so they're also going to be looking to pick times of delivery that are optimal for them, and perhaps, depending from where the material is coming, I think it's less likely that they're going to do a lot of their hauling during peak commute hours, if they can do it at another time.
Any further questions?
I have none.
Do I have a motion?
Move to close public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Some discussion?
I have no further question, I mean...
No, I agree, it was explained pretty well, and this concern was resolved.
Was resolved.
Okay. One of the two of you like to make a motion?
Can you read that? Because I can't read it. But I can read it off of here.
It's different on there.
You have to have a eye and...
Yeah, I can attempt to read it. I'm a little off, but bear with me.
You can also read it down here.
Yeah, no, I think...
Here, let me get the glass.
Um, excuse me. I move, excuse me. Adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Carlos approving an amendment to the 2008 Grading and Dirt Hall Approval Certificate for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation St. Carlos Center located at 301 Industrial Road, APN 046051070 and 046051020, San Carlos, including Exhibit A to the resolution, Grading and Dirt Hall Approval Certificate, substituting alternative wording for Condition Number 10 as amended and set out in the supplemental staff report, made part of the minutes of the meeting.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda, oh, I have to advise you, there is a 10-day right of appeal, so that's just part of the process. And the next item on the agenda is reports, correspondence, and general information.
Oh, about the city council, I know there was the styrofoam ban, and I, I'm sorry.
I heard the Carlos Club will be coming back to the city council.
Oh, that's correct. The count, thank you for that reminder. The council did ask on a 3-2 vote to bring up the Carlos Club use permit for their review.
Do you know when that'll be?
It was about a month out from their meeting, so mid-April.
Planning Commission comments or reports?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. Correspondence?
None.
And D, which is Planning Staff Comments, Reports, and Updates of Current Projects. And the first item under there is an update on the RDRC process of residential design review, which I asked to have brought to the Planning Commission from RDRC.
Yes, so the Chair of the RDRC and Vice Chair of your Commission might also want to add here. What I did was slightly changed the staff report to reflect a little bit of what the RDRC considered, but what we presented as staff to the RDRC was what the new zoning code means in terms of reviewing single-family residential design, and that there are five instances where the Design Committee might be looking at something. Always new homes, always, when, in situations where the...
Page 2.
Sorry. I got it, under this part. Additions which create houses greater than 3,000 square feet on lots less than 7,500, and we use that lot size because there is a sliding scale. We used to call it the floor area threshold. That really doesn't exist in the new zoning code. It's a table that says, these are the instances in which there's design review. Another time when design review is kicked in is when the residents with total square footage is greater than 40% of the lot size, and the new code, and that's typically on a sloped lot, the new code... a sloped lot, the new code does allow coverage up to 50%. If you remember, we changed it from 40% coverage to 50% because stakeholders that were interviewed and people in the process said, it's a little restrictive in the community, and there hasn't been an issue with bigger houses necessarily, and so let's let them get bigger on a single story before we start forcing them to go up. So it's a 50%. There's also a trigger where the, on, that's related to slope, where design review gets referred to the residential design committee. And then also, there are instances where it is felt by the staff that the design could benefit from the eyes of the residential design review committee. You have in the back, at the very last page of the packet, the notice that we have amended and will send out, which shows that, it used to say, the house is such and such a size and it exceeds the floor area threshold by this much. The implication was that you can't have a house that is bigger than the floor area that was set at 3,000 square feet. There is no limit on house size in San Carlos, and we want to make that clear, but we now have put in this, the five places, the reasons why it's being reviewed, and we will check a box. We'll also simplify the staff reports, those of you who've been on there, we said it once, we said it twice, we said it about three times, and we're just going to really reduce the amount of paper we produce and write more clearly. We will continue to do the pre-process with neighbors, ask the designer and applicants to advise their neighbors, meet with their neighbors, allow the neighbors to give input, but we won't be producing all of that in paper form. We'll have it at the meeting, we'll also put it in e-packets so that people can view it online. And we will include, of course, in staff reports when there is controversy, but if it's, everybody likes it, we'll say everybody likes it, and just bring the folder to the meeting that has all the documentation in it. We all, we now also are doing some new handouts that we hope will make it easier for folks to understand the new code, and so it's a process that is evolving, and we have not yet had a house come under this new process that the design review committee looked at, but the next one will be our maiden voyage, so we'll do tweaks as we see needed. And did you want to add anything, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair?
Thank you. No, other than the fact that it was really important to the members of the RDRC to have that little piece where it says there's no maximum size, house size in San Carlos, because a lot of times people would come in and say, you know, this is beyond the limit, why are you, why are you willing to even look at this? And that was a confusion that we needed to correct. I really like the design of the packets now, they will, they will have the photos and figures from the updated zoning ordinance, so I think that will help significantly. Only the appropriate ones for that particular project. So, are there any questions?
Angela, have you sat on that yet?
No, I'm going to a meeting now.
This would be much nicer for you.
Yes.
We have elections, first meeting in June.
That's great, that's great. I'm glad, I'm glad to see we've made some progress in that area, because needed it.
Excellent. I assume there's no motion or anything needed, because this was just for information.
Just informational.
Policy thing.
One last thing, and that is, are there any current projects expected to come our way soon? My impression from the last meeting--
Yes, April 2nd, you'll be reviewing the final EIR for the Wheeler Plaza project, and that will be a recommendation to the council. While we are sorting out the financial means and the successor agency, you will just be looking at the EIR and not the entitlements for any part or whole of the project yet, but the EIR did cover all that we anticipated may happen.
And I'm sorry, maybe I should have asked these before, because they're kind of out of order, but I have a, I have kind of a question, I guess, for everybody. If, since the city council is going to review a decision that we made on the Carlos Club, I'm wondering what would be an appropriate role for us as far as, I don't know, I obviously would want to attend the meeting, would I speak in public forum? How might that work? I'm just curious.
Actually, good question.
Yeah, how about I ask the city attorney to get you a memo, and typically, if the council asked for any clarification, it would be the commission as a whole, what was the vote and what did you consider? Would be my expectation, because, though you can sit in the audience as a member of the public also, but--
Yeah, I just wanted to know what would be the most appropriate way to go about it. I was asked individually what my, you know, rationale was, and I certainly responded to that, but I was wondering if maybe a broader audience would like to hear that.
I'll ask the city attorney to send a little memo to you all, about that.
Great.
Meeting adjourned.